Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, January 23 meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is Mayor's public announcements, and I have absolutely none. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. A couple of items. First, Steve Griffin, our Community and Economic Development Director is here and has a few new staff members he'd like to introduce.
Hi, could you guys stand? Good evening, Steve Griffin with the Office of Community and Economic Development. I have three new staff members that I wanted to quickly introduce the Council to if you've not already met them. From your right to left, we have Megan Jones, who comes to us from the city of Carbondale and the city of Chicago, where she worked on assisting project managers in encouraging economic, commercial, industrial development projects. She also worked as a-- in zoning and in comprehensive planning and historic preservation, and she comes to us with a degree from DePaul University in public service management. And she's a Chicago native that we're going to have her focus on some of the work in the West Evanston, TIFF area, the Central Street, webpage improvements, monthly news of economic development activities, and quarterly reports. In the middle, next to her is Jim Fury. He also is an economic development specialist. He comes from the University of Illinois, where he earned a bachelor's and a master's degree in urban regional planning. Here was my favorite thing on his bio, while with the city of Palis Heights, Jim developed a passion for economic development and helped attract over 40 new businesses to that community. So we have him part of our economic development team. He will also be involved with our facade and program, some of the work on the West Evanston TIFF, representative on new prospect business, and assisting economic development coordinators with local business retention and expansion. And then the final new member we have, who started with us in November, is Melissa Klotz. She comes to us with a degree from, let me see, Northern Illinois University. She spent four and a half years with Loves Park in Cortland, Illinois, working for them in local, all aspects of zoning. And her work has been focused on special use permit cases, variances, staffing, our zoning board of appeals, customer service. She's brought a whole new effort and focus on helping customers better oriented to city of Evanston codes and regulations, and a key contact point, and then, of course, staffs are a spark. So, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I'd very like to show you our new team here and welcome them as we all help each other making Evanston a wonderful place to live, work, and play.[232.48][232.48](APPLAUSE).
And Madam Mayor, unfortunately with, as we welcome new staff, we're also here this evening to say farewell to a staff member, Paul Schneider. Our city engineer has decided to return back to the private sector, and we just wanted to take an opportunity to let you and the community know this and take an opportunity to thank Paul for his good work. He's probably served Evanston in the three years he's been here during some very tumultuous times as far as change of staff and elected officials, and has done it always with a great professional demeanor, and we're going to truly miss his contributions to the city of Evanston. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Paul for his good work, and I imagine some Members of the Council may also have comments about Paul's service.
Well, I'd certainly like to say thank you, Paul. I know I've sent you a lot of emails over the past three years, and you've answered them all and been extremely helpful and informative, so thank you. And Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Schneider, thank you so much for your years of service here to the city of Evanston. It's been such a pleasure for me to work with you on all manner of issues and challenges along Central Street and in the neighborhoods, and I've learned an awful lot from you. I think in a previous life, or maybe in a future life, I'll be a traffic engineer, because it seems like a fascinating intersection of both science and human behavior. And our city engineer, our traffic engineer sees sometimes the worst of human behavior as we know from our discussion about speed limits on Oakton. So I wish you well in wherever you're heading next, and please keep in touch.
Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. I too would like to say thank you, and thank you most of all for helping me bring light to the West Side. Really do appreciate that so very, very much, and the best to you wherever you're going.
Alderman Fisk.
Yes, Paul, thank you so much. Your help on Sheridan Road went above and beyond the call of duty. I know if Rosemary O'Neil is watching, she's going to be very sad not to see you knocking on her front door. And that, standing out there counting cars with you, I mean, you were always, I'm sure that was just a horrible thing to have an Alderman ask you to do, but you and Suzette did it, you did it cheerfully. The residents appreciated it, and all the other help that you've given us in my ward for, you know, street crossings, that crazy intersection at Davis and Benson that I was always bugging you about, and everything else that you've done is, has been so professional, and I appreciate it so much. And thank you for all the ward meetings you've had to sit through, and your just constant professionalism in the face of sometimes adversity and tough questions from citizens. Appreciate it, we're going to miss you. When Wally sent around the emails saying you were leaving, I think my response was, oh, nuts. So, thanks.
Alderman Rainey. Well, I appreciate all the same things everybody else here has mentioned, but I want to say specifically about your service regarding the yellow line stop in South Evanston. Paul's presentation in front of, I don't know how many people were at the table, a bunch of big shots from all of the different transportation agencies, just brilliant, just beautifully done, casually presented, and had their attention every single minute. What are we going to do without you? I just, I mean, I love the rest of the staff, but you are such an important part of that. Hopefully, you'll reincarnate as somebody getting ready to approve this whole project on the other side of the table. But I do appreciate it, and my first thought when I read that memo was, what are we going to do? I mean, it just, anyway, good luck to you, and nice move. Alderman Wen.
Well, I, Paul, I can only add my thanks as well for all of your service. Chicago Avenue is, and the Third Ward have presented a number of issues, and during your service, you've seen the change in the 100-year-old CTA wall, which no one else had achieved.
Oh, that's brilliant.
And it has happened under your supervision and under your watch, and we will have started three new viaducts. So there's a lot of Evanston's transportation network that is significantly different as a result of your leadership, so thank you very much.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Paul, thank you also. I know we've only worked together for a short period of time, but I've appreciated just everything, and I've learned a lot from you in that short period. So on behalf of all the folks from the Second Ward, I wish you a lot of luck in the future, and I know you'll be successful wherever you land.
Good luck, Paul.
That concludes--[561.62][561.62](APPLAUSE). Madam Mayor, that concludes my presentations.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have any communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to remind everybody that the election is coming up soon, on March 20th, and again, the city will be offering early voting. We'll be here seven days a week, Monday through Sunday, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 9:00 to 3:00 on Sundays. That will start on February 27th and end on March the 15th. So those who want to beat the crowds for the election for 2012, come into the Civic Center on Room 22, 2100 Ridge Avenue. That's my announcements for today.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Citizen Comment. I'm going to call the first four names. Please come up, give your name and address. And you have three minutes each, and we're happy you're here making comments. Mr. Rizki, Cheryl Munro, Sharon Eckerstall, and Marcia Fincher.
Janette Rizki, before I get in my speech, I didn't realize Mr. Schneider was leaving. I never really worked with him, but I did work with his past director here. It's very unfortunate, I think, how Wally reorganized the city. The engineers, I mean, myself, and I don't talk about my career much here, but some 30 years ago, actually, I was offered a job to work on the space shuttle, to do engineering analysis. So I have some background in engineering. The city of Evanston doesn't do much engineering, but the fact of the matter is, when Wally reorganized this, he put the engineers, it appears, under streets and sanitation. The director position disappeared. So frankly, any engineer here that's worth much would not want to be here for very long, and that's very unfortunate. But tonight, I'm going to speak on another item, and that's a rather troubling trend I see here with the habit of the city negotiating leases that basically give money away to groups with limited financial means. To me, this is a high-risk venture to the taxpayers. The lease for the recycling center to the youth sports group, the lease and sale of this Church Street building to a group of contractors, and then tonight, a lease to a theater group. Basically, with, all these are basically people that have no collateral to put up. The city takes the financial risk, we spend our money, these things flop, and these are a waste of our money. We can lose hundreds, we lose hundreds of thousands of dollars all the time here. In the case of the recycling centers, I mean, one of the speakers, I believe, was related to an Alderman, and I thought it was amusing. Would that Alderman feel comfortable putting her home up for collateral for the deal? I seriously doubt it. My point is, the majority of these deals are just really bad and high-risk, and have no value to us as taxpayers. They're really, they're really bad business deals, and I think council members don't really care, because it's not your money, it's just the taxpayers' money. And a large numbers of these deals don't even make any sense at all, and we're just adding more staff. Tonight, we added a bunch more staff to do signs and signage and things. It's, you know, some more deals like this that are of no value. Nobody would invest in these deals in the private market. And then my other question is, the council says Wally's going to negotiate these deals. Are these subject to council approval, and what ability will the public have to review these prior to approval? And just to conclude, frankly, with how much money we're wasting here, and the likely 10% property tax I think we'll see next year, and some of the other issues, we better start to start thinking about some of these deals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cheryl Munro, 1729 Oakton Street. I'm here to ask you to please support our effort for the traffic schedules as regard this speed limit on Oakton, item A6. I know that this is a very big effort that we're asking you to support, and we don't see a lot of this on major streets in Evanston. We do have a lot of children on our street. We are looking at using the recycling plant for bringing more children onto our street. There is a serious safety concern for residents on Oakton, not just for children, but for residents that live there as well. We have huge swaths of areas that don't have alleys behind our homes. We have difficult times safely getting in and out of our driveways on Oakton Street. We're asking that you bring back the level of safety for children and residents, end the harassment we're undergoing for obeying our traffic laws at the mercy of other drivers who honk at us and shout, swears at us for actually doing the speed limit, and bring back the quality of life for the locals in that area of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Sharon Eckerstall, 2519 Ashland, and the former Township Assessor, here to address two issues with the Township, abolishment. Number one, when I was appointed to the position of Assessor, I occupied the small room at the end of the hallway, directly opposite the council chambers. We seemed to be getting along rather well in there, it was cramped, but then the supervisor needed some offset on her bills down at Main and Dodge, so I agreed to move down there after the lease was up. But the rent down there for my space was six, seven times as much as City Hall and all the utilities. So in a way, maybe that was a mistake to move out of here. Maybe the Township should come back here and cut the expenses that way, and that would help everybody with their budget. But one thing that disturbs me is the referendum that you're proposing. When I was Assessor, you cut my budget to the extent where I had to fire my deputy assessor because my budget was cut to $86,000, and her salary was 55. Now, as trustees slash Aldermen of the Township, you have the ability to cut the budget. Have you ever thought about cutting the budget to a minimal and making them live within the guidelines, and possibly having to lay off people, but in that respect, maybe we could save part of the Township and move into City Hall and defray some of the cost? Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia Fincher. Is Marcia here? Mike Vasilko, Padma Rao, and BK Rao.
Got six pages now. I did have to add one item to my list, because I beg to differ with Mr. Rizki. First of all, it's Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue. Beg to differ with him on the Howard Street and Theater Development effort. This particular project is very well thought out. I could tell you that from personally seeing behind the scenes what goes on with it, and it will be successful, I have no doubt of that. I am in the private sector, and I'm proud to have invested the time and the effort that I have. So I think that'll be a very successful economic development project. But that's not why I was here. I missed the first meeting you had this year, sorry to say, and I wanted to touch on a really asked question, you know, why we really had to raise the debt limit to the, well, raise it at all, let alone to the extent that you did. I was very discouraged when I heard the news. I don't think it's something that would, had to have happen. I have a lot of respect for many of the people who sit behind this desk, so forgive me when I say that I was just personally disappointed in that decision to raise the debt limit. I think it shows a certain weakness, especially on the heels of recent property tax increases, increased fees, increased fines, increased spending on wasteful activities such as business block parties, a discussion on the EDC agenda later this week. You all know that if you have access to the money, I know it, you know it, it'll be spent. What I'm looking for personally, I guess, is more discipline on, to hold the line on spending, rather than turning onto the more convenient and all-too-warned path of taxing, borrowing, and spending. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were reviewed and approved by my attorney. We object to this Council's vote at Kendall to needlessly sentence over two dozen trees to death and to endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. The Evanston Patch reported that your First Ward member was overheard telling the developer's lawyer that your vote would be pushed through no matter what taxpayers say, and that's exactly what happened. Do you think the voters will forget that this Council totally ignored taxpayers' concerns? The developer's lawyer stated in a letter to the city that the developer hired Holland and Knight to sue the city, but the city was both a former and current client of that firm, to which this Council approved payments of tens of thousands of tax dollars. The rules of professional conduct governing lawyers forbids such double representation against either a current or former client. Those rules are part of the Illinois Supreme Court rules, and as such, have the force of law. Why didn't this Council defend taxpayers' rights? Is it because your First Ward member's son works for that firm? Do you think the voters will forget that this Council sacrificed taxpayers' rights and tax dollars? When we pointed out these glaring conflicts of interest, your mayor, your Eighth Ward member, and your lawyer repeatedly attacked us in violation of the First Amendment. Do you think the voters will forget that this Council violated taxpayers' constitutional rights? At your November 28 meeting, your First Ward member claimed that your ethics entity's opinion condoned her conduct, but the city's website shows the agenda for your ethics entity's meeting last week with unfinished business, including discussion slash approval of advisory opinion, Ree Alderman Fisk. The website also shows that meeting was canceled. How did your First Ward member claim to report an opinion when said opinion was still under discussion and not approved to this day? Why would the taxpayers lend credence to any such opinion when your member treated it like the mere rubber stamp of a fawning lackey? Do you think the voters will forget this Council's abject disregard for its duties to the taxpayers? Adding to the folly, most of you voted to impose a referendum to pursue discontinuing the Township, ignoring the likelihood of costly lawsuits by taxpayers. Despite the rules of professional conduct, your lawyer refused to withdraw immediately upon admitting to a conflict of interest. Wouldn't disqualification be shameful? The Township Code at 60ILCS 1/1550 states that the Council can vote by three-quarters majority to effectively resign from the Township. That way, the electors can choose Township trustees who are willing to fulfill the duties of office. Do you think the voters will forget this Council's threats against the Township when today's economy makes general assistance more vital than ever? Since you keep giving me more to talk about, I'll see you all next time.
BK Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were reviewed and approved by my attorney. The main issue is the Kendall re-subdivision, as it involves killing over 24 trees and causing safety hazards due to traffic dumping onto the narrow street. Your First Ward member championed for this project against taxpayers' concerns. This kind of behavior from an elected official is not just unethical and undemocratic, but also insulting to the taxpayers. We protested because the resolution was passed without addressing any of taxpayers' concerns. The mayor tried to silence us. Isn't the city's lawyers' encouragement of the mayor's improper behavior not only unprofessional but also disgusting? Isn't it even more disgusting that this staff member is paid with taxpayers' money? Why does your Eighth Ward member repeatedly interrupt citizens' comments? Doesn't this person know how to refrain from insulting taxpayers? During citizen comment, the taxpayers speak, not her. That leaves the silent seven, who simply sit and watch as if they have completely forgotten their obligations to the taxpayers. This taxpayer wonders why you are there if you cannot, and will not do anything for the taxpayers. Often, I am cheered on by the Evanston residents, who have watched the sad antics of the city council on TV and on YouTube videos. In summary, they say, "Go, girl, we are with you." That means these folks are not supporting the wrong direction of this council. To all this, we are the foolishness of expensive advisory referendum authorized by a majority of this council, that in all likelihood cannot legally achieve its goal, even if it does pass. Isn't the council embarrassed to propose such a waste of taxpayers' money? What kind of a legacy are you leaving? The legacy of tree killing? The legacy of destroying the city's history? The legacy of trampling on democratic principles? The legacy of ignoring and insulting taxpayers? The legacy of kowtowing to the developers? The legacy of endangering pedestrians? The legacy of covering each other's backs? What are you leaving, besides leaving a gaping hole in the budget year after year after year? Is your legacy one of clear stubbornness in the face of legal impairments to the dismantling of the Township with its open invitation of taxpayer-initiated litigation, and likely even more embarrassing disqualification of the city's attorney for conflict of interest? Shakespeare said, "The evil that men do lives after them." Do you want to be remembered for leaving such a legacy? Don't you think the voters will remember your legacy and act accordingly at the polls? I'll be back to tell you more.
That concludes Citizen Comment. City Manager, we have a 2010 Census and Ward Population Special Order of Business.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we have received complete census data from the US government, and with the receipt of that data, it is appropriate for the City Council, every 10 years, to review that data and make decisions regarding potential redistricting of the city's wards. Steve Griffin, our Community and Economic Development Director, is here with a presentation of that data, and we would ask at the conclusion of his presentation, for whatever appropriate direction you see fit for next steps, to either look at this data further or make, begin the process to make adjustments to the boundaries of the city of Evanston wards. Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Steve Griffin, Director of Community and Economic Development, and good evening. I'd like to particularly thank, there's a lot of, a team of us that put this together, but in particular, Grant Farrar, Corporation Counsel, Shanee Weston, the Community and Economic Development Department Management Analyst, and Mark Forner, GIS Specialist. First slide we wanted to give you or talk to you about is basically to show the summary of the changes that have occurred since 2000 and with the 2010 census. So the population increased overall citywide only 247 people. That population shift represents about a 0.33% increase in total population, but I think it's interesting, and we're going to get into this a little bit later in this presentation, but one of the fundamental tools with census and ward configuration are census tracts and census blocks. And with the census this year, or this, in 2010, excuse me, the amount of census blocks has grown from 777 to 1,500, due primarily, they're not just at streets now, but they're at alleys. So that's something to work with. Overall, you're going to see a ward population map sometime soon. That basically is a summary of our GIS work on this so far. I'm going to walk through each of the wards, but you can see where the population shifts have occurred throughout the city, and there's important points with that, and like I said, since these wards are drawn, the city wards are drawn, coincident with census blocks and tracts, we would be able to provide a whole lot more data, should the Council wish to explore this. So Ward 1, that particular ward grew from 7,996 persons to 8,252 persons, or 256-person increase, which was 3.2%. Ward 2 grew 92 persons, so with a 2010 population of 8,133. Ward 3 grew, it was the largest growth of all the wards, to 500, by 545 persons, so it's grown to 8,742 persons. Ward 4, there was actually a decrease of 47 persons in that ward, so that population in 2010 is 8,075. Ward 5, that also lost population, 187 persons, for a 2010 population of 7,700-- Ward 5, that also lost population, 187 persons for a 2010 population of 7,778 persons. Ward 6, that increased in population 389 persons for a 2010 population of 8,952. Ward 7, that grew slightly, 26 persons for an 8,702-person population. Ward 8 decreased in population 392 persons for a 2010 population of 8,250 persons. And then finally, Ward 9 decreased in population 435 persons for a 2010 population of 7,602. So talk a little bit about the redistricting of wards. Due to an overall increase of only .33% increase in population, Illinois does not mandate a requirement to redistrict. Generally, that's around if there was an overall increase of 10%. There's no case law or statute that addresses a timeline for discretionary redistricting. So being that you don't have to, you're not mandated, you don't necessarily have a timeline for discretionary redistricting. The last reconfiguration of wards, most of you who are here were in 2003, and the city council approved that by ordinance. The principles for redistricting, in 1970, the Illinois Constitution requires five basic principles should the council want to pursue redistricting. One person, one vote, fairness to minority groups, compactness of districts, continuity, and fairness to political parties. Timeframes, like I said, being it's, we're in a discretionary period, not mandatory, the municipal code does require, though, that a redistricting occur not less than 30 days before the filing of candidate petitions. And working and going through case law, the city attorney recommends that should the council wish to go through a redistricting process this year, that a ward map be adopted no later than August 1st, 2010. So a little bit back to the GIS tools.
2012.
I'm sorry.
2012.
2012, I'm sorry. Yeah, August 1st, 2012. But back to the GIS tools. We can provide you, the GIS staff can provide you a lot of census data by ward right now if you've not already asked for that. A lot of demographic data such as total housing units, how many are occupied, how many are vacant, race, age cohorts, et cetera, can be provided. So we would be happy to coordinate and get that to you at your request. I've already challenged my staff to do a handout of this citywide anyway, but you may want to tailor it down to a particular ward. The GIS system that we already have in place have a lot of opportunities that exist for public access to mapping programs that can be utilized for ward redistricting. So should you want to, and I was telling some people that I've actually done this twice before in 1990 and 2000, we would be able to work with you if you're looking at a particular area. And because we're down to alley kind of block data, easily manipulate that data to show you what the ward populations would be. Again, we're here, wanted to brief you on the population projections, but you may have some questions or, again, you may want us to come back with some more specific data. Be glad to answer any questions as well as Corporation Council.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have several questions. One is really about the requirement for redistricting, and the state of Illinois does not require redistricting based upon an overall increase in the city's population, but not based upon any kind of imbalance among our districts. Am I right? So if the population as a whole didn't change, or what is the, what's the ceiling?
Grant Farrar, Corporation Council. With respect to the issue of redistricting, the case law, which is somewhat inconsistent, does coalesce along one certain point, and that is where there is a deviation of approximately 10% in population. Deviation, though, in population amongst wards within one geographic election area is a factor, but it's not the determining factor. You also have the other factors that are spelled out in the presentation according to the US and Illinois Constitution with respect to contiguity and one person, one vote. So I think really for framing the discussion at this point, the two important numbers to sort of fix on are the 247 total increase citywide and the .33%, which is the percentage increase based upon the census data. So just based on the math alone, under that standard, there is no trip, there is no requirement for redistricting. I hope that answers your question.
So we could have with a total overall city population that doesn't trip any wires here with wide disparities among the populations differences between our wards. So the ward that is the largest of voters and population is the sixth ward, and then my colleague in the ninth ward has the smallest ward, and I think their difference in population is what?
1,300.
1,300 residents. But that's not enough of a discrepancy to require redistricting.
Yes, the municipal code is clear that redistricting is required when it's clear from the data that a city's entitled to either more wards or less wards. And then the boundaries would be reshuffled, redrawn. In this case, I think it's pretty clear based upon the data that there's no need, that there's no requirement that redistricting occur. And then, once you consider the ward-by-ward variations, I think that pairs up with some of the discussion in the case law, Baker versus Carr and the US Supreme Court decision and its progeny, that talk about ripples in a district, in an electoral jurisdiction, that there can be ripples amongst the larger group, the larger set of voting blocks, but those ripples aren't necessarily, they don't necessarily require redistricting. So again, plus 247, plus .33%, that it's, there's no mandatory trigger in this instance.
So another question I had, actually, maybe it's two combined, is about the process. Hypothetically, if we were going to undertake redistricting, what would that process look like? And looking back to the process that produced our current ward boundaries, perhaps somebody could also share with me the reasoning for the current ward boundaries, which, as you know, produced a seventh ward, which is unlike every other ward. By shape, just by shape. The most, you know, some have told me it's the most gerrymandered of the wards, but in comparison to a lot of Chicago wards, it's actually pretty straightforward.
Well, I think with respect to the process issues, there's certainly folks on the dais that are much better qualified to answer that question than myself. I will say that the reason why I proposed the August 1 date is that if we were to look to the Illinois State Election Code and figure out, okay, when do new wards have to be drawn, then the municipal code is clear that only in the case of mandatory redistricting, it has to be done 30 days before petition circulation begins. So I think it's pretty helpful and just a common sense, from a common sense standpoint, that we would want to adopt that same date. So I put in the August 1 recommendation, recognizing that, of course, the Illinois State Board of Elections has not published the official election calendar for the 2013 municipal election, but based upon past practice, petition filing happens sometimes in September. So that was just a good clarifying date.
So before August 1, then, what would the process look like?
Well, I guess that really depends in large part on how the technology between now and then has evolved. I think that with the prior process, there were the public meetings, but you certainly didn't have the software that allowed you to move maps, draw lines, and push the boundaries around, that it was sort of a hybrid between technology and then the old-style map-making exercise where you'd stick a map up on the wall and draw lines all over the place. So I think that the council could actually determine what the process would look like now based upon how the technology has evolved.
Alderman Grover, you done?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can answer a couple of your questions, I think, Alderman Grover. Having been involved in at least the community discussion on ward redistricting in 2000, or actually it was 2003, I believe the map was approved. You cannot, my understanding is, draw out of a ward by changing the boundaries an elected official. And I believe part of the seventh ward was to include the mayor, who was then Seventh Ward Alderman.
That's correct.
And the other, the other thing that I wanted to say is that, first of all, congratulations to Alderman Rainey and the first ward for coming as close to the ideal total population number as you can come. So that worked out pretty well. When we were working on at least the discussion of the maps back in 2003, we did it by hand. So it was going through and actually writing down and plotting out census numbers. It was almost like a board game. It was incredibly time-consuming, so having the software to do this will be helpful. The other question I had is that it was a goal of, I think, all of us working on maps the last time, and there were many people who put forth maps. Lots of people got together and worked on maps, and it was a community participation sort of effort. But a goal I think everyone had was for at least one, if not two, majority-minority wards. And I don't think we were able to achieve two majority-minority wards. And we came as close as possible, I believe, in the fifth ward, where it was about 50/50. And that, so my question is, I would like to know the composition of the fifth ward in terms of minority population with the goal that we should try to at least come as close as possible to a majority-minority ward, at least one.
As I said, we can provide a detailed breakdown per ward of a lot of socioeconomic data, so we will have that in time for your next packet. That would include not just race, but a lot of age and other socioeconomic data.
Okay. And, I mean, ultimately, I think that the, again, anticipating what the changes were going to be over 10 years from 2003 to 2013, I think we, some interesting things have come out in this map. The first ward in 2003 was fairly lower, or on the lower side of total population, with the anticipation that the new developments, the Sherman Plaza and the other developments downtown, were going to be coming online. And that was also the case in the fourth and in the second ward, that also picked up some new developments in the downtown. So I think we made a good decision back then, at least, to consider what development was going to be occurring and looking over to trying to create the best possible map for the 10 years that we're going to be entering into. And, you know, I think there may be aldermen who look at this map together, who might want to massage the boundaries for whatever reasons. So I think that being able to have an additional number of, you know, block groups that can be divided at alleys is actually going to be very helpful. But I guess I would encourage my fellow aldermen to kind of take a look and talk to their neighboring aldermen and see if, you know, if this map has worked well for them, and if not, are there ways that it could be massaged to make a better map? Because I think all of us fairly well know, you know, where the, you know, exactly what's happening on the boundary lines of these maps, or of this map over the past 10 years. So I would just encourage discussion among the aldermen about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
Thank you for all your work on this, Mr. Griffin. It was very informative. My ward is the one that has the least population. Mark, our alderman, has 1,300 more people than the ninth ward. So I want to know, I guess I got a couple of questions. The first is, if we have minor adjustments to the boundaries, so there are some boundaries with the eighth ward and the ninth ward that just don't make sense for compactness and continuity of residents. Portions of the ninth ward are clearly within, you know, outside of what the rest of the ninth ward is, and it makes sense to be in the eighth ward, to be represented in a holistic manner. And there are portions of the fourth ward that run along Main Street that cuts down the middle of Washington, one side's the fourth ward, one side's the ninth ward for continuity. It makes sense to be in one ward. How much would that cost if we do minor, if aldermen get together and say, "This makes a lot of sense"? Do we have to do a large public process? I don't want this to cost a lot of money, but if we can make it, I guess, better overall for our residents, I would like to be able to do that. So, and I know we have a lot of technology that it makes it easier to do, but at the same time, I don't want to leave residents' comments out.
We have the technology now that we would be able to do that in a meeting setting. So like at a Rules Committee meeting, we could bring that up and show those changes. We've also talked about aldermen having the ability to basically do that from home as well and call in, or I could bring back GIS staff and basically doing a tutorial program. But again, maybe I've got a little bit of old school in me. We, where, and Grant was kind of talking about this, where we used to draw maps and then go back and do the numbers, we could do that live for you. So those minor tweaks in a public meeting setting, we would be able to do, and you would see that information instantaneously, and what the population shifts would be, as well as some of the demographic information. Because each block, each small block, has a multitude of attribute data or socioeconomic data on each, and as you move that, those total populations could be, so we could make it as easy and open as a meeting and doing the map that way. But like you're saying, it would be, and that would be, we've got the staff and the technology to do that. But the more you get into public meetings and hearings and that sort of thing, that's what protracts some of the costs that would be involved with it.
And I guess that's what I'm asking, sorry for jumping into a follow-up, but from a legal standpoint, what is, can we do, can we do that without going through a long process if they're very small changes? I'm trying to save money, as usual.
Well, I think that, obviously, the issue of redistricting, along with most instances of work in the city of Evanston lends itself to an open process. So, I mean, there's the posting and the notice requirement under the Open Meetings Act. I think really what's going to drive this issue is how the technology just works and how each of you on the dais interface with the technology. So I think that's really going to drive the issue. The legalities, you know, a notice and comment period, posting, you know, public meetings, I think that's all relatively easy and certainly in line with customary procedure and practice in the city. But I really think that the open issue at this point is just the technology. I think once, once there's a comfort level established on an individual basis, then the process will sort of coalesce. So I really think that it's the issue of resources and money, I think you're all in the driver's seat in determining what shape that takes.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, I think Grant just hit it on the head. In 2003, there was no comfort level among those of us who were serving. And there was less comfort on those in, you know, our constituents. It went on for months, and it was very costly, and it was very painful for some of us. What people did in the first ward ended up having dramatic effects in, for example, the eighth ward and the ninth ward and the third, I mean, it was... for example, the Eighth Ward, and the Ninth Ward, and the Third, I mean, it was a very unpleasant experience. And we did have technology. We had excellent GIS technology at that time. So my recollection is a little different than Alderman Fisk's, but maybe that's because I was on the council and she wasn't. I don't know if I had access to things that she did not. But I do know that there was a steady stream of constituents running in and out of this building, constantly getting maps, getting this, getting that. And it was an expensive process. I do not support going for full-blown redistricting. We had an increase of 230 people in this city. And that just does not warrant upheaval among the wards. And what is the purpose of doing that? To give some alderman an advantage over another alderman? That's not the way we work anymore. I think it needs to be as little politicized as possible. I don't know what the majority-minority numbers are today, but we certainly can find out. Just press a couple of buttons, add a couple of searches, and you'll find out. One of the things that I recollect is that when you're redistricting, for example, it's not just so easy to clean up a little jag, jig, dag. Don't you have to move blocks, census blocks? You can't divide a census block? That's my recollection.
That's correct. But like I said, the blocks have been shrunk now to alley side.
I saw that, almost doubled the number of blocks.
So you're right, all the wards are coincident around blocks now. So now that you've kind of got like twice as much ability, if you will, to look at more details.
So before, a census block might have been a two-block-long street that you had to move from one ward to another. So, I mean, that does make a difference in tidying up some boundaries. So, but I certainly don't support full-blown redistricting.
Alderman Holmes?
Well, Alderman Rainey almost said what I was going to say in terms of my recollection was not quite the same as Alderman Fisk's. But she too was a citizen then, and so was I. And on one of the citizens committees, that was looking at the redistricting. And I know that it had a lot to do with the moving of students in One and Seven. And so it was a lot of, just a lot of feelings in the community about it. And I certainly wouldn't want to go through that again. It was very, very painful. And I was really excited when I saw the .33 percent that we don't have to do it. Well, maybe we don't have to do that again, because it was a nightmare. And if it doesn't take a lot to tidy up something, if we can do that. I thought that if we did anything, that we'd have to then open it up to a whole process. So I'm also saying, let's leave it like it is. I think that we've done well. And if we could do that, then just move ahead. Otherwise, I think that we will open it up again, because we do have to have a public process if we're going to do this. And I don't think there's any other way to do it.
Alderman Winn?
Well, Alderman Holmes and Alderman Rainey have taken the words out of my mouth. As I opened this, the document that we received from Steve Griffin, and went through ward after ward after ward, looking at the numbers, I was trying to remember what the legal requirement was. And as we, as it reached that final number, I realized it had to have been below what we were, what required a redistricting. And I said, "Hallelujah." I don't think that we should reopen the process. It was really difficult for the community. And absent our ability to make minor tweaks, and I can't believe that's possible, without requiring a full opening to the entire community, which would be entirely fair, I say we should just leave it alone.
Alderman Grover?
Interesting. You reached the conclusion that we legally don't have to redistrict. The question then is, do we want to redistrict? I have no doubt that the residents of our most populous wards, the Sixth Ward and the Third Ward, are extraordinarily well-represented on the City Council, although their representation is on a different basis. It's given the number of, the discrepancies in the population among the wards. So I'm not sure, I don't even know myself whether I want to undertake redistricting. And I'm certainly not interested in inflicting or having you relive the pain of 10 years ago at all. But if there are ways that we can do a little rebalancing, it might be worth discussing. I wonder if staff has had a chance to play around with the mapping at all? Just...
We played, and this is one of the products that we can give you, but again, we could...
But not with a redistricting?
No, no.
Not with, going around and see what it would look like?
No.
Hypothetically, or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
That is not something we want to take a lead on. I learned my lesson a long time ago, in 1990.
Alderman Burris?
I understand the reluctance of aldermen that were here when it was under the last redistricting. It was a different council then. It was a different environment in the community. There were different town gown issues in the community at the time, which what I understand is many of it was driven by trying to make sure that you broke up the vote of students, as well as other key issues. So you have gerrymandering of wards. I see it very differently of, we don't, we're not going to do something because it'll be painful, or we're not going to do something because it'll take time. But if we know that making some changes are better for the residents, better representation, to have a compact and cohesive part of their community, that's what we're supposed to do. We are here representing the best interest of the residents, not what is in our best interest, not as what is easy for us. So I'm a little concerned about the comments of, "Well, let's do nothing because it's easier for us." What is best for representing the areas in our community? Alderman Grover, last council meeting actually was at AP&amp;W. I had made a comment of, "My Ninth Ward residents." And Alderman Grover said, "They're my residents too. And the Sixth Ward and Seventh Ward are your residents too." So we need to look at this comprehensively, if that is a true statement. What is best, not about this little piece is the Ninth Ward and has always been, but it was previously the Eighth Ward, what is best overall for our community? So I do think that we should look at making some adjustments that are best overall, and not what is easiest.
I'm going to break into this conversation at this point, because having done this 10 years ago, also, I do not believe that this is a process that is designed to figure out what's best for the residents. This is a political process, and it is inevitably painful. And I think what's best for the residents is if we spend our time on more substantive issues than which block will be in or out of our ward. So I agree with Alderman Winn, that when I realized that we didn't have to do it, I thought, "Hallelujah," because I do think it's best for the residents, that we have a lot of difficult problems that we should be attending to, and this will be extremely painful. It is a wonderful council. I am delighted to serve with all of you, but this is inevitably a painful process when one alderman suggests doing something to your ward. So I agree with Alderman Winn. Hallelujah. Alderman Fisk?
Well, I can make it simple, too, and say I agree with you, Madam Mayor, and with Alderman Winn. And Alderman, yeah, Alderman Rainey, and I do.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, I'm listening to Steve Griffin and all of the technology that they have available to them. And I'm just wondering, is it a proper function of our staff to be really involved in this? Or is it more, is it really political? I believe it's completely political. And one of the things, Alderman Burris, that I think some of our residents along Oakton think, is that they have two aldermen.
Some of them do.
I mean, no, but I mean, we, I mean, I don't see that there's this, there isn't this adversarial relationship between aldermen who adjoin the ward, the adjoining ward aldermen. So, you know, I just, I just get very nervous when we start step-toeing around the idea of, what is it, when it's at large. I get very scared that somebody's going to come up with the idea of, "Oh, let's not have any wards, and let's just do, you know, aldermen at large." Because I think that's wrong. And I think one of the good ways to look at that is how the school board is elected. They are elected at large. I don't have a school board representative. They're all my representatives. So I want to know, who do I go to to get some action out of the school board? Nobody, because I don't feel that any of them represent me, really. So I don't want to get into that discussion. But I, if we can just talk to one another and see what some change that an adjoining alderman wants, let's talk about it, if it can happen, and if it doesn't upset the apple cart. But we have 200, what, and 33 additional people in this city? We cannot spend time on this. And it's, you know, the pain, listen, there are plenty of things more painful than this that we deal with every day. So it's not the pain, it's the ridiculousness of it, with 233 or 37 people going to full-blown redistricting. That's what it is. I misspoke. It's not pain, it's ridiculous.
Alderman Tenetum?
Thank you. I too agree that it's, looking at the change in population, it doesn't warrant a huge discussion for change. And I think, too, we're looking at numbers. Several have referred tonight as the Sixth Ward being the largest population. But you also, I think we also need to consider there's a simplicity there, too, in terms of what comes to the alderman first. I, there are not many public buildings there. In fact, it's hard to find a place to have a meeting. But I look at the Seventh Ward, my neighbor, I see, you know, university, hospital, grocery stores, transit. I see a lot of different aspects, different facets, the community that get her attention first. I have in the past stepped in and helped with Seventh Ward issues, where they do affect the Sixth Ward, particularly the library, North Branch Library, and the Central Street Business District, and still working on that presently. But, you know, I think it's more than just numbers of people. I do think it's, each ward has its business and other districts to be concerned with, too, and how much impact that has on the representation on council and the work that the alderman has to do.
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
I guess I'm saddened by the notion that everything is going to be hurtful and that's going to be painful. I thought that we had moved much further than that, and clearly I'm hearing that we haven't. And that's really disappointing, being on this council for three years, and we still are using that kind of language, when we're talking about going out to the community, or we're talking about working with each other and making adjustments. So, you know, clearly, no one wants to make a change. We want to keep the status quo, which, and I can't remember who the quote was, "If you want to keep the status quo, there's no need for leadership." And I guess I'm just saddened by the language that's being used of pain and hurt when you're talking about redistricting. There's a lot more pain and hurt that we do, and hard things that we do on council. I'm just not sure that this is one of the most painful and hurtful things that we could do.
Alderman Rainey?
It's 230 people, Alderman Burris. That's all we're saying. I have already told you that I will do
I know.
Exactly what you want along my border.
I agree.
I am totally in sync with you on that. So that's not painful at all.
I agree. I'm not saying we're painful.
And so, so that's done with. So that's, that's at least half of your issue. So, I mean, if others don't want to do it, don't make them. You and I can work on this. I'm happy with it.
Alderman Holmes?
I'm smiling, only because I think that we have demonstrated, oh, these last, since 2009, since new council came on, that we can work together and that we've been doing things across borders. You know, the First Ward, the Seventh Ward, and the Fifth Ward have worked together with the student issues. Alderman Grover and I, with the Fifth Ward and the Seventh Ward being bordered along McCormick. It doesn't make any difference what boundaries we develop. One side is going to be one ward, and one side is going to be another ward. It's going to happen, whether you put people up, move them up one block or not. There's still going to have to be a border there. And it's a division in terms of ward. But that has nothing to do with working together. So when I talk about painful in terms of, and sometimes it's good to hear the history of something, I'm talking about the whole process that we'd have to go through, not in terms of aldermen working together, because I think we are past that. So it doesn't sadden me to talk about it, talking about, you can't just say, "Okay, we're going to do this little," I don't think, I might be wrong, and maybe Mr. Farrar can correct me. But I think that if we open this up, we have to open it up to a whole public process. And it begins to get much more involved than what I think we can do just working together. And I just don't, I don't see it as sad, Alderman Burris, as you do. I think that we are doing it. I think we're working together. I think we have a wonderful working relationship. At least, I feel that way.
Mr. Farrar, did you want to clarify that?
I think that just in terms of the legal threshold, is the legal threshold. There's no threshold here that requires redistricting. The public policy consideration of the members of council and the mayor is what is at issue. And once that road is taken, I think that the process will open up as things gain momentum.
Okay, well, this is on for discussion, not for any action. And seeing no further lights, Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda? And welcome back, Alderman Rainey.
Oh, gosh, it was only done one time. But she was still missed. I didn't realize this was going to end so quickly. It seemed like we were going to beat it.
I don't think it ended quickly, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I thought we were going to beat it to death a little longer. Before I begin, I was absent at our last meeting, and I was over 1,000 miles away. And I watched you from human services, from AMPW through the council meeting. And I have to tell you that the audio and the visual, everything was just perfect. It was just like being here. So you all did a great job speaking into your microphone, and it was just amazing. I kept wanting to talk to you.
And your email, "I am watching you," was well received.
And it's true, I was. Okay, let's see. I'm trying to get back in the swing of things here. So just give me a minute here. Okay, good. Okay. Okay, I'm here now. I keep losing it, City Manager. All right, all right, here we go. This is the consent agenda. First, approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of July 9, 2012.
Take them off, please.
Oh, take it off?
Yes.
Okay. Next, Administration and Public Works Committee. First item is City of Evanston payroll through January 1, 2012, $2,436,199.97. The City of Evanston bills 2011 through, this is from the 2011 revenue, January 24, 2012, $2,283,860.79. The bills through January 25, 2012, from 2012, $863,940.68. The committee and staff recommend approval of the base bid plus alternate one for the Service Center Locker Room renovation project to Menusos General Contracting. Service Center Locker Room renovation project to Manusos General Contracting in the amount of three hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred thirty dollars. Funding will be provided by the fiscal year, two thousand and twelve, capital improvement program. Approval of a contract award to G A Johnson and Sons is requested for the Service Center Parking Deck Repair Project plus alternates one and three in the total amount of five hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. We ask your approval also of the renewal of elevator service agreement with Otis Elevator Corporation for the Civic Center Service Center, Maple Avenue and Church Street self-parked for a one-year term, the cost of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and twelve cents. This is a three percent increase over last year. Next, the staff and committee recommend your approval of one-year renewal of the service and maintenance agreement of this encr- elevator for the elevators at Sherman Plaza Parking Garage at a cost of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars and eighty cents. This is a four percent increase from the last year's fee. Next, approval of a renewal of annual Azteca City Works Maintenance and Support Agreement for the term February twenty-one, two thousand and twelve through twenty, February twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, with Azteca Systems for City Works Work Order and Service Request Management Software in the amount of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and five dollars. We ask your approval also of a renewal of annual Acela, the PAL Maintenance and Support Agreement for a one-year term from March fifteen, two thousand and twelve, for two Acela in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Also requested is your approval for the renewal of the annual Oracle Enterprise One Maintenance and Support Agreement. This is a sole source for the term March one, two thousand and twelve through the twenty-eighth of February, two thousand and thirteen, with Enterprise One software in the amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand, twenty-four dollars. Next, your approval is requested, pre-approval is requested for repair of expenses associated with a biannual inspection overhaul and required maintenance of Street Sweeper sixty, six-six-one in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand from Standard Equipment Company, which is the authorized service provider for Elgin Pelican Products. Next, approval of the first seven months of two thousand and twelve fuel purchases in the amount of five hundred fifty-five thousand from World Fuel Services. This is Northwest Municipal Conference Bid item. Next, approval is recommended for the council to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Muni Code in the amount of thirty thousand, five hundred sixty dollars plus tax. Should we take this off? Because there was an issue about tax and shipping and numbers of pages and-
I'm looking at-
Should we leave it on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not to exceed the amount.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. A not-to-exceed amount of thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars plus tax and shipping for the publication of the two thousand and twelve City Code. Next is Resolution two R twelve, which I'm going to take off, the consent agenda, which has to do with City Lit Theater. Madam Mayor, when it comes time to, for the chairman to present this, I'd like a request that they be allowed to speak.
That would be fine.
Next, Ordinance one zero twelve, which amends the City Code to establish a three-way stop at Church Street and Judson Avenue. This is for introduction. Is traffic schedules relating to Oakton Street on or off the consent agenda?
Like to off?
Off, it's off the consent agenda. Next, Ordinance three zero twelve, which amends Section seven-two-six of the City Code to enact regulations for moving vehicles and storage containers on the public way. This has to do with reserving parking spaces and the right-of-way to load and unload moving vans and containers. This is for action. Next is Ordinance four zero-
And can you take that off, please?
Which one?
A seven.
Oh, A seven, okay, the one I read. A seven is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. What about A eight? We okay with that? Ordinance four zero twelve is for action tonight. We request your approval of amending the City Code Title ten-two, ten-twelve-two, making it a municipal violation for drivers and passengers to not use safety belts by making it unlawful for any person to violate that chapter of the Illinois Vehicle Code. Next is Ordinance eight oh twelve, adopting the City Code of two thousand and twelve. Staff recommends passage of this ordinance, which adopts the City Code for two thousand and twelve. Exhibit A includes the two thousand and eleven provisionally approved amendments and revisions to the Evanston City Code and can be found at the City of Evanston's website. This is for action. I think A ten needs to be off because of the rather important amendment that was made to that. Liquor Commissioners, Madam Mayor, do you agree?
On. City Attorney, does it need to be off?
No.
Okay, all right. Keep in mind, there are amendments to this. The local liquor commissioner and committee recommend city council adoption of Ordinance nine zero twelve, which prohibits licensees from bundling, taping, packaging together or otherwise manipulating single containers of beer of less than forty ounces for resale as a set. This ordinance was introduced with amendments at the January nine, two thousand and twelve city council meeting and is for action tonight. Ordinance ten oh twelve, amending Class S liquor license. The liquor commissioner and the committee recommend city council adoption of Ordinance ten oh twelve, which permits the sale of wine, beer and alcoholic liquor in the, in the package store area of a combination restaurant, package store licensee. This is for action. Next, under Planning and Development, Ordinance six oh twelve, granting a special use for child daycare center at sixteen twenty-nine Orington Avenue. The proposed amended ordinance six oh twelve reflects P and D's committee's direction to address two aspects of the application for special use by Bright Horizons Childcare Center LLC. This is for action. Next, under Human Services Committee, H one is Ordinance eighty-one oh eleven, which amends Title nine, Chapter four, Dogs, Cats, Animals and Fowl, to add a new section, Responsible Pet Ownership, to address residents who repeatedly violate city ordinances regulating domestic animals. This is for action. Next, we go to Appointments. Under Appointments to the Environment Board, Jacob Crow Garrett, Progerat. For Landlord Licensing Committee, Paul Arndsten, Albert Bowen, Richard Buchanan, Dana Carroll, Jane Evans, Barbara Jane, Steven, Steven Monacelli, Pat, Patricia Phillips, Lisa Pildis. For reappointment to the Civil Service Commission, John Paul Schmidt. Housing and Community Development Act Committee, Michelle Lacy. Preservation Commission, Ann McGuire. Library Board, Diane Allen. And Preservation Commission, Chris Hartzell. With that, Madam Mayor, I conclude the consent agenda and move approval.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda and seeing no lights for discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The consent agenda passes. Alderman Burris, could we have Administration and Public Works, please?
City Clerk, approval of the minutes, regular city council meeting of January ninth, two thousand and twelve. Do you have amendments?
Yes, I do. On page eight, under A four, the added addition to that should have been with Alderman Burris' motion for approval with amendment to a hundred thirteen thousand dollars. That was proposed in committee. And then on the bottom of page nine, P two, should have been Alderman Holmes' motion for suspension of the rules and it was seconded with a roll call of eight. Alderman Holmes then motioned for approval and it was seconded and a roll call was taken with a vote of eight to zero. Motion passed. Those are two addition, corrections to the minutes. Moved, did the minutes be accepted?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was having trouble with my microphone. Move approval of the minutes with the amendments as stated by the city clerk.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the amend, the amendments to the minutes and we can have a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item A four, Resolution two R dash twelve regarding a letter of understanding between the City of Evanston and the City Lit Theater. The committee asked for your approval, but we would like to hear from two representatives from City Lit. Thank you.
Did you move it in?
I'm sorry.
Move approval from the-
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
I'm Terry McCabe, the artistic director of City Lit. This is Brian Pastor, the managing director of City Lit. I've lived here in Evanston since nineteen seventy-eight and was lucky enough to work at both other Howard Street Theaters. The Practical Theater, which was at Howard and Custer, and Wisdom Bridge Theater, further east on the Chicago side of the street. Both now long gone, of course. All of us at City Lit are very excited about the possibility of becoming the third Howard Street Theater. If it all works out for City Lit to move here from our current home in Edgewater and become Evanston's newest theater company, we will immediately also become Evanston's oldest theater company. We've been, we're in our thirty-second season, going back to nineteen seventy-nine. We produce what we call literate theater, meaning mostly but not exclusively world premiere production, stage adaptations of literary material, such as novels, short stories and so on. Also plays, whether world premieres or classics, that seem to us to have some stature as literature. Currently, we're in the second year of our ongoing Civil War Sesquicentennial Project in which one show each year, usually a world premiere and always opening in April, commemorates and explores the legacy of the Civil War. We produce shows about thirty-six weeks of the year and when we're not producing, we sublet our space, our stage out to other companies for their shows. All told, we bring about six thousand people a year to our stretch of Bryn Mawr Avenue. Once they're there, by far the majority of them spend other money at other businesses near us. They have dinner before the show or a glass of wine after or both, or maybe they pay a parking valet or they put gas in their car, whatever. Our average ticket price, after all our various discounts are factored in, is about seventeen dollars. We know the average City Lit audience member spends more than that at any one of our restaurant neighbors because they're nice sit-down restaurants and you can't get a good meal and leave a nice tip at any of them for as little as we charge for our tickets. That is to say, the restaurant across the street from City Lit makes more from a typical City Lit audience member than we do. But the reason that person comes to the block in the first place is to see our show. Beyond our main programming, there are a few other things we do. In cooperation with the American Library Association Office of Intellectual Freedom, every fall during Band Books Week, we perform free concert readings at libraries every day of band book weeks, libraries across the city of Chicago and suburbs, of excerpts from that year's ALA list of the top ten most frequently challenged books in the country. We cosponsor with a group called The Viola Project, a year-round series of Shakespeare performance workshops for adolescent girls ages eight to sixteen, in which they play and learn how to play not only Juliet and Rosalind and Ophelia, but also Richard III and Melvolio and King Lear and Othello and Hamlet. We have a partnership with Woodson Elementary School on the south side of Chicago, in which City Lit teaching artists work in the school for weeks with the faculty, developing curriculum and then work with the students in a, in a range of classes, including their special ed class, to help the students devise their own adaptation and their own performance of a book in their curriculum, using the process of preparing to perform literature as a particularly effective means of studying literature. And we have a ticket giveaway program in which we donate tickets to our shows. Last year was about eighteen thousand dollars worth to other nonprofit groups, scout troops, hospitals, churches and synagogues, animal rescue centers, other arts groups, for them to use in their own fundraising efforts as silent auction items or whatever. So, that's who we are. It is nice to be here, it is nice to meet you all. We look forward to the opportunity that lies before us. Brian and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have about the theater or
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you and thank you very much for being here. And I've not seen any of your shows, but I have looked at your website and I particularly appreciate your, your efforts for community education in the literature and I'm also proud to have read a number of the band books on the list as well, so appreciate that. I did have a question on the city responsibilities for the discussions that are undergoing, or that are ongoing. I understand that it's, it's a negotiation, it's a process, it's not a final product. But I was wondering if you had an estimate for the capital contribution that would be required to do that roof raising for the infrastructure needs for the building?
Well, you're right, all of that is still in, in conversation and there's no, we've not reached any sort of like estimate from the architect as to what the build-out is going to cost or anything like that. So, it's all very, you know, early in the discussions. We've started gathering people to work with us on a capital campaign, which would be necessary. And what we're telling them is that, you know, as you've said, everything is still sort of in flux, but that we're, we're imagining that what we'd have to raise would be somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's for your contribution?
Right.
And, but we don't, at this point, we don't know what the city contribution would be, right?
Exactly.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Our contribution for the build-out, that's what you're asking about, right?
Right, the build-out, right. We really appreciate your, your interest in introducing this project.
We appreciate being here.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, Alderman Wilson, I thought we had talked before about the cost for raising the roof. The, the building is not adequate to serve any responsible theater operation. And the commitment that we are looking at making is around six hundred thousand dollars of TIF money, not, not general fund money, but Howard Street TIF increment for raising that roof. And the number was arrived at by a series of meetings of architects doing drawings for free. Carl Bovas in the audience, he participated to some extent on civil engineering, I don't know, it's all Greek to me. And we had architects, contractors, et cetera. And as I explained in AMPW, at, after all of the design discussion took place, and it did not involve City Lit, they were not part of these discussions at all, but they did involve Shulun Shook, a man named Todd Hensley, who's very, very well-known in the theater community, who has done Looking Glass and, and many other theater designs. He's a lighting, theater lighting and design expert. And he was a participant in this group. And we met maybe five or six times. And after the design and the drawings were done regarding raising the roof by the architects, Mike Vasilko invited Bully Andrews to join us, who is a contractor that we use in the City of Evanston on our garages. And in fact, we just paid a bill last week for half a million dollars to them. He, the, the representative from Bully Andrews sat down with us and we did estimates. And he came up after a week of work with something like eight hundred- And he came up after a week of work with something like eight hundred thousand dollars, which we then, you know, they, it was all top of the line. We then value-engineered it down to easily six hundred thousand. So when we came to the council a couple of weeks ago, asking for allocations for each of the buildings, the allocation made for the theater building, the request was for six hundred thousand dollars. And that is the limit that the city of Evanston would expect to pay to do the construction work for that property. What the theater group is going to be responsible for is everything once that, that roof is raised, to make it a theater. They're responsible, we'll do the grid, but they're responsible for the lights, the seats, the, you know, whatever decorative stuff, painting, that kind of thing, the risers, I don't know what it's all called, but they're going to be responsible for all that. We will turn over a vanilla box or black box, whatever the theaters call it, and...
And then we'll do essentially what most landlords would expect most tenants to do, is I think, is sort of how we're all thinking about it.
And this is, this is a negotiating period where discussions will take place, and, you know, Mr. Ritsky was so wrong on this, as far as I'm concerned, because this is a, this isn't, this is exactly what TIFs do. We bought the building, the theater is, we're going to negotiate with them a lease to own. We are not going to own that building. If they don't buy it in three years, we're going to arrange with somebody else that we're going to be getting rent for three years, we're going to be, you know, it'll go into their equity, into their down payment, and that way we'll be able to move on and do some other work on the street. But this money that's being used can't be used over at Dempster Dodge, it can't be used over on Sheridan Road, it can only be used on Howard Street, it can't be used anyplace else. And that's between Ridge and the tracks. And to me, I think this is a classic case of economic development gone right with tax increment financing dollars, and that's what this is all about. And it was interesting to hear about the, the person from the National Endowment from the art, of the arts. He, he gave a little speech, and his last comments had to do with how, how performing arts and theaters are a real impetus for economic development. And no other street in this city needs economic development more than Howard Street, East of Ridge.
Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, and thank you, Alderman Rainey. And it's my understanding that, no, it's my understanding, I know that we allocated the money in the capital improvement plan a meeting or two ago, correct? That's going to be debt, it's going to be repaid by the TIF over a period of time, so that all makes sense to me. And I think I just, it's helpful for the community to understand that this is an investment that we're making. We're not expecting the theater to purchase the property from us for the full amount of money that we put into it. We're making approximately a six hundred thousand dollar investment, but that's what it is. It's a, it's a decision to make an investment in that, in that area, and it's not, it's not a giveaway. It's, it's an effort to try to bring some, some stability and make some progress in that part of the community.
It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution two R twelve regarding a letter of understanding between the city of Evanston and the City Lit Theater. And Alderman Wilson.
I almost forgot, and all of the good things I like about this, the memorandum draft letter, you can't escape the lawyer in me, right? I'm not real comfortable with the non-binding section being categorized non-binding, I'm sorry, the binding section being categorized as, as binding, particularly in view of the fact that only a portion of that is, appears to be intended, let's, let me find it again.
One thirty-six of the packet.
Right, 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 okay, so if we look at page, at the top of page one thirty-six, there's an out provision in, in part one, in paragraph one, and it says, except as, there be no further obligations except as provided in part two, paragraphs one and two. And then we have part two, binding provisions, and there are a series of subsections that go beyond one and two. So are all of those binding, or is just one and two binding? So I support authorizing the city manager to negotiate the memorandum of understanding. I would just request that the city manager and the legal staff review the memorandum closely before we actually sign it and pass it along. So with those comments made, support of the motion.
Seeing no further lights.
Could I, could I just get a clear, I don't quite, not being a lawyer, I don't quite, if you could be a little clearer.
Okay, it says, there are two categories of provisions, there's the non-binding ones and the binding ones. Part of part one says, the parties will have no further obligations if, in other words, if it falls through, there's no, there are no further obligations except as provided in part two, paragraphs one and two. That's not really clear, because part two has more than two subsections, it has a series of subsections that go beyond that. So then the question could theoretically become, for example, paragraph three, improvements, the parties anticipate, anticipate the major renovations, would we be bound to make those improvements even if we don't go through with the deal? Of course we wouldn't. But there's, my, what I perceive to be some potential ambiguities in the document, so I just am suggesting that the city manager's office and the city attorney review those to make sure that there aren't any inconsistencies.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, thanks.
All right, third time's the charm. Resolution two R twelve regarding a letter of understanding between the city of Evanston and the City Lit Theater, all in, has been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Alderman Burris.
A six ordinance, the committee asked approval of ordinance one thirteen dash oh dash eleven, amending portions of Title Ten, Chapter Eleven, traffic schedules related to speed limits on Oakton Street. The Ninth Ward Alderman, me, has requested the proposed ordinance one thirteen dash oh dash eleven, by which the city council would amend Section Ten dash eleven dash two, Schedule Two, to establish a twenty mile per hour speed limit on Oakton Street between Dodge Avenue and Ridge Avenue. The ordinance was held in committee on December twelfth, twenty eleven, and introduced at the city council meeting on January twelfth, twenty twelve. There was a split vote in APNW. Ask for your approval.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance. Alderman Burris.
I spoke about this last time, Ann, in APNW, and what I'm asking for is to help find relief for the residents on Oakton that are experiencing large volumes of truck traffic, noise, speeding cars, they can't get out of their driveway, they have cracks in their walls, they have windows that are cracking. We have many, we have at least two parks, we have three schools along here, we're going to have the new soccer, baseball indoor facility. There are a lot of reasons to slow down the traffic. I am asking for you to help, not a Ninth Ward resident or an Eighth Ward resident, I'm asking you to help the city of Evanston residents. I'm asking you to help them and not asking you to spend a dime to help them. Many times people come before council, any of you ask for things to spend money. I'm not asking you to spend money, I'm asking you to help residents that have called out. I have, and you all have petitions, they've come to council. They're not just, if you want people to call all of you, they're, they're calling their Ninth Ward resident, they're calling their Eighth, or their, their Ninth Ward Alderman, they're calling their Eighth Ward Alderman. This is an issue, I'm asking you to help them. They are your residents too, as Alderman Grover points out, so help me, help these residents. If you choose not to help them, please know we have a five-year capital improvement plan that we're looking at. Remember their calls for help when we look at redoing Oakton. I'm not asking to take money out of other wards, I'm saying we need to help these people. So when we go forward, I would hope that you would support helping to repave Oakton, looking to the future. Right now, I'm asking for a twenty mile per hour speed limit relief until we can repave Oakton, or we can find money for bump outs, or we can find money for more speed signs to slow down the traffic. What needs to happen to say we're going to make a difference here? Do children need to be hit by cars? Do we need more accidents on Oakton? I'm asking for your help to get this approved.
Alderman Rainey. Alderman Grover.
My, my only concern with this is the twenty mile an hour speed limit. I agree that traffic moves too fast, I think because the posted speed limit is thirty miles an hour, and it's pretty clear that most drivers are at or near that speed limit. I wondered if, if you would consider lowering the speed limit on that stretch of Oakton to twenty-five. Would there be any impediments to us doing that? Would our traffic engineers or our city engineer, our, our departing city engineer support a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on that stretch of Oakton between Ridge and Asbury, or, or further east?
Dodge and Ridge.
Sorry, Dodge, I was thinking, Dodge and Ridge, yeah.
And Alderman Grover, members of the council, really, it's a policy decision for the council.
This is a state route, an IDAT route?
No.
No, it's a city route.
Alderman Wilson.
I take twenty-five.
Thank you. I live on Main Street, so I am very sympathetic to the, to the plight and the concerns. And by virtue of that fact, and by virtue of the fact that Dempster and Main Street run through my ward, and Main Street has schools, has parks, has the same problems, I have a very, very strong reservation. People aren't stupid, people are going to figure out, okay, this is the street that's twenty miles an hour, they're going to take the alternate route, they're going to take Main Street, and they're going to take Dempster. And what we're going to be doing is we're going to be moving the problem from one place to the other place. And I don't think that is, I don't think that's appropriate. I could not agree with you more about the infrastructure needs and the need to have that in the capital improvement plan. That's the appropriate solution. We have similar problems on Dempster, I get calls about the, you know, the, the concrete plates under the street bouncing. There are a lot of capital improvement needs that have gone long unaddressed, and those need to be addressed. But fixing one stretch at the expense of a large number of other people, I don't think is, is fair or appropriate, so I can't support this. We've already adjusted the truck routes, and that has had a substantial impact on Main Street. A lot, a large number of, large trucks are now rerouted from that area to Main Street, they're having difficulty navigating turns into the businesses they're supposed to be delivering to. And it seems like, for one person, it might be a good idea, but there are going to be a lot of unintended consequences, so unfortunately, I can't support this.
Alderman Holmes.
Well, as we discussed in committee last week, week before last, I, my concern is that Oakton is still an interway into the city, even though it's not a state highway. And I, as Alderman Wilson just said, he was talking about Dempster and Main, but I think about Church and Emerson and Simpson. If we make this one twenty miles per hour, then what about the other ones? And I can see those kind of requests coming in, because it's legitimate, and I think that we all know that. We talked about maybe moving up with the capital improvement, I think that certainly those things need to happen. We had a whole list of, of things that the staff has done to try and alleviate the problem, and I don't think that we can, you know, bypass that. I mean, they're doing it, and we also talked again about moving the flash, the signs, maybe if I remember, it was farther east a little bit, or maybe it was coming back west, that that might help as well. So there are some other things I think that can be done to do it, but I think that it would be very difficult to change and make this a twenty mile per hour permanently on Oakton. I just think that we are asking for problems for the rest of the city.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I agree basically with what Alderman Wilson and Holmes have said. I, I wouldn't have any problem changing the speed limits throughout the city to twenty-five. Sherman Avenue north of downtown is twenty-five, while Sheridan Road is thirty. We have a lot of problem with people on Sheridan Road speeding, and, you know, hopefully that will be, you know, alleviated to some degree when the new signalization goes in on Sheridan Road. But I think twenty-five gets everybody where they're going, I think it really does address the concerns, and very real concerns, that Alderman Wilson has. I, I, I just cannot see that if we put a twenty mile per hour speed limit in, that other streets aren't going to have to accept the higher, the higher speeding traffic. So I just don't think that works, but twenty-five miles an hour throughout the city would be something I could support.
Alder, Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All of this gets to problems with driver behavior, and none of us know how to fix that, I think. I do eventually want to see bump outs at Wesley and Oakton, but I want to make a friendly amendment to the motion to change the speed limit from lowering it to twenty to lowering it to twenty-five miles per hour on Oakton Street between Dodge Avenue and Ridge Avenue as a friendly amendment.
I would accept that amendment.
And second?
And second.
Call the question. Because the official speed limit at Evanston is twenty-five miles an hour unless otherwise posted. So this just puts this stretch of Oakton, I think, in line with the majority of our streets in Evanston.
All right. Alderman Wilson.
It's, to me, it's still going to result in the same problem, because you have the other streets, the entry points to the city are still going to have all of that redirected traffic, so that's my view.
Alderman Burris.
But the other streets, Main and Dempster, they, they don't have three schools. You have one, you have Robert Crown, and, and there's, there's Park School, but it's, it's a very small school, and it's, and it's, it's in a business district, and you don't have a lot of traffic moving quickly there. But you do have a whole stretch of Oakton, it is, it is a bit different, and, and I appreciate what all of you are saying of you don't want it moving to another, another major street. But this is unique, and I take what Alderman Grover said at the APNW meeting, I want to say two meetings ago, I drove down Central Street today, near Bent Park, and there's a park there as well, we need to slow down the traffic. But Oakton, literally, from the time you hit James Park, all the way until Ridge, you almost have exclusively either a school or a park. So it is a bit unique, when you look at the major thoroughfares coming into the city. There are very few portions of it, I encourage you to drive it, and I know that some of you do, because you, you're spend time at James Park, and you may have kids that go to school or do things over, over there, Levy Center, but drive it. You, you can, on the south side of Oakton, there are maybe three blocks that aren't a school or a park. It is very different, you have so many kids, you have people walking their dogs, you have people going to James Park, and people that live on Oakton don't have an alley that they can't pull in the back and get into a garage, they have to back out onto Oakton. So it is a little bit different. So I'm, I'm, once again, twenty-five miles is definitely better than, than thirty. I'm not asking for money here, I'm, I'm asking to help me out, help these residents out there, you're residents too, and I, I really appreciate Alderman Grover, Grover making the amendment and, and going with me on this, thank you.
All right, seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to amend proposed ordinance one one three oh eleven relating to speeds on Oakton Street to twenty-five miles per hour. A city clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
No.
Alderman Wynn.
No.
No.
Alderman Holmes?
No.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
There is five to four. This fails.
Five to four, the motion fails.
A7, the committee asked for your approval of ordinance 3-0-12, amending section 7-2-6 of the city code to enact regulations for moving vehicles and storage containers on public ways. Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to Alderman Braithwaite.
I just had a quick question about that $100 fee. And I'm, and I'm, I think it did pass through budget, but I don't remember hearing about the origin of the fee. So, I was trying to get a better understanding of the origin of the fee and how it's going to be enforced.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Braithwaite, page 156 of the packet, just a little bit of the detail about this. Again, Alderman Braithwaite is correct, this was something that was part of the budget process. We currently provide a no-fee permit for moving for those individuals who need additional space in the public right-of-way for moving vans. So, this is something we have done without a fee in the past. The $100 is an approximate fee associated with the staff costs to put signage up. Ms. Robinson, the Director of Public Works is here, it's her office which administers the existing program, so we're not proposing to change the permit, we're merely, as part of the budget solution, proposing that a fee be attached to the existing permit.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Clerk, and City Manager. I'm Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. And Alderman Braithwaite, you asked about enforcement. This is a request, a program, you actually request the permit. So, if you, if the space should be available and, on your block, and you have a moving van, you would not, it's not an enforcement situation. What this does is allows the right-of-way to be reserved. So, if you don't have the space available, you got plenty of cars parked, you would make the request then, okay?
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. Suzette, is, is the $100 to recoup the city's cost of going out and putting signs up and cones or whatever else is required, is it really this high, or is it?
Well, yes, we actually, it's actually, the cost to the staff is actually higher than what we're proposing. We go out, we put the, the signs up, they have to be posted 48 hours in advance. We actually go out and inspect again 24 hours, and then the day of, to make sure, because what happens is residents will remove the signs and then park there anyway. So, once we have made the commitment, we come out and actually police it, and then after the moving van is done, the, then we actually go and remove all the signs as well, so.
So, for residents in neighborhoods that, where there is not a lot of parking on the street, and a moving van pulls up and unloads, they would not be subject to this $100?
Yes.
Just only for a permit to remove a parking space?
That's correct, only to block the right-of-way, only to reserve the right-of-way. If you, if you flip a coin, write a spread and take a chance, but you can't block the right-of-way in any way. You can't put chairs out, you can't put, you can't do any of that.
Right. Could you remind me how much we charge to allow the pods to sit in the street?
It would be the same price.
Under this ordinance?
Yeah, under this ordinance, it would be the same price. I don't, we don't charge them at all.
But the pods can sit there for several days, right? A moving truck is not going to sit there for several days.
We put the, yeah, there's a limit on the amount of time.
Okay.
Yeah, it might, the pods may be covered under the right-of-way, but, and then, and once again, it has a timeframe associated with how long it could be there.
Does that answer all your? Alderman Wynn? You know, I'm sorry I didn't think about, I apologize for not thinking this through a little bit more, I guess, now that it's being described somewhat. For folks who live in a denser neighborhood, they will always have to pay this fee, because there's no way that they will ever be able to get three, get the, however long an 18-wheeler is. You'll, you would never find that in my block, ever find that you'd be able to pull up an 18-wheeler. And, and, so, you know, I, there probably are other parts of the city where you could pull up a moving truck and never have to pay that fee, but there are an awful lot of people who, who will have to pay it, and so it's not actually, it doesn't apply to everybody in the city who, who uses a moving van, that's right?
Yeah, I think there are very few places, and once again, you're taking a chance to, that there would be no parking. Where, where we have parking, we're pretty well parked, which is, you know, why we have the street sweeping, complicated street sweeping schedules, and snow removal, and snow emergency schedules, because we have a lot of on-street parking. Most communities don't provide this, it's, you know, you find three or four neighbors and have them all park, and then have them move, and that's how, that's the reservation system. So, we've been offering this, and like I said, it involves a lot of staff time, and there's a huge expectation on the residents' part of us policing and making sure that that space is avail, I mean, we're making a commitment that we're going to make.
And I refer people to it all the time. What do we do to the moving trucks who don't do this? Because there are so many on, on Hinman, you know, south of Main, where the moving truck is just sitting there in the street. Do we actually ticket them?
You mean in the middle of the street?
Where, I mean, where, they don't get the parking, they don't, they haven't reserved anything, they're just pulled up all day long, and so people are going around them.
Yeah.
Do we actually ticket them?
Well, that would be a question for Chief Eddington, but I would imagine that we should.
Okay.
And you'd be kind enough to grab the chief, we.
We should ticket them for, I mean, I don't.
Well, certainly in light of the permit, it hardly seems, I mean, we'd have people double parking, blocking the right-of-way is.
Unless the ticket's going to be more than $100, you're, you know, it's, you, you might as well not get the permit.
And Chief Eddington, Mr. Lyons and I, we're speaking a little earlier this evening, the police department doesn't, do you get calls, is on a complaint basis mostly, and there are tickets issued. I don't know if Mr. Lyons is aware of what the tickets, also, our parking enforcement officers are also involved, and depending on workload assignment, sometimes they are dispatched to the scene for, for ticketing. Mr. Lyons, Chief Eddington, do you have? Chief, the question was regarding the ticketing process, the cost of the ticket, what the general frequency is?
And for this particular complaint, police department personnel would respond to a complaint-only basis. This is not something we'd look for. If we go out, we'll try to manage the complaint, get people into compliance, but this is not top on our to-do list. Well, it depends on the situation, depends on if the people who called and complained had a legitimate complaint, "I can't get out of my driveway," they won't move. We'll try to negotiate it, but if we can't come to a successful conclusion, we can always default to a ticket. But we're, there's going to be some other effort put into it before we get out the ticket book.
Right, but my, my question is, thank you, Chief, is that if you're parked in the actual right-of-way, I mean, in the lane, and, and loading and unloading, which happens all the time, not in the parking lane, do you know what the ticket is for a moving, moving van parked there?
We can write a ticket for obstructing the roadway, but once again, based on a complaint, we would go out and try to negotiate. And frankly, with the congestion we experience in town, this is a difficult situation that we will try to negotiate our way out of, because writing the ticket usually doesn't fix anything, because they still got to unload the truck. So, we're, and frankly, I'm somewhat more familiar with the downtown for a whole host of reasons. I see the trucks unloading, the alleys are black, the roadways, the lanes are black, whether it's FedEx, UPS, you know, who delivers to Walgreens or CVS, that goes on on a daily
Alderman Burris?
Yeah, I just want two comments, actually, one question and one comment. I think Alderman Wynn, isn't most of where you live R1? I would think that other areas are more dense, because you, I know you live in the R1 area, so your area is not as dense as, like, say, the Eighth Ward or the First Ward, where you have a lot of apartment buildings. So, I would think the majority, probably 99% of Evanston, would have to do this. I can't imagine part of Evanston that an 18-wheeler could pull up in front of someone's home and move in. So, I think the single family probably have a least problem than people that live in apartments or people who live in areas like where I live, and in R3 area. So, I think it's probably going to pretty much be everyone. Revenue in the budget for, for the moving van fee, so how much was that? And if we decide to vote against it, what else are we going to take out that we're not going to pay for in the budget? Just, I think we need to think about that.
It was $50,000. We generate over 500, currently, over 500, we process over 500 permits a year.
Okay, so if we don't approve it, we need to find $50,000 to take out of somewhere else in the budget, just to put it out there.
All right, everyone, back to, it's been moved and seconded to pass ordinance 3012, amending section 726 of the city code to enact regulations for moving vehicles and storage containers on public ways. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two, the motion passes. Alderman Burris, does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And Alderman Holmes, you.
Alderman Mayor, no, no, I mean, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, no, no report.
Thank you. All right, so we are moving right along to call of the wards, starting with Alderman Burris.
No, we didn't. We're clarifying if we pulled A10, but we didn't.
The next Ninth Ward meeting will be on February 29th at the Levy Center at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Just a reminder that February 9th, we'll have our first Second Ward meeting of the year, 7 o'clock at the District 65 building. The three topics that we'll be discussing with the neighbors are, you'll have an opportunity to meet the owners of Bonnie Management, who recently purchased the Evanston Plaza, and we'll also have an opportunity to hear from our city staff regarding the two referendums, the one for District 65 New School, as well as the referendum to dissolve the township.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn?
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Thank you, and Alderman Holmes?
No report.
All right, Alderman Tendem?
No report, thank you.
Thank you all. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly, good luck, this is finals week at ETHS, good luck to all ETHS students, hope they make it through these next few days with good focus, clear heads. And our deliberations at Human Services on the proposed ban of all cell phone use while driving will not be on the February 6th agenda, but rather on the March 5th agenda, Monday, March 5th, Human Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey?
May I have all their time?
Of course.
I was absent, you know. I want to thank everybody, especially Alderman Wilson, for supporting the theater on Howard Street. I will not let any of you down, and I know that City Lit won't let you down. It's an amazing opportunity for us to bring this to Howard Street. And I know, you have to get tired of hearing me say that, but living there, I live on Dobson, which is one very short block from Howard Street. It is so unique, Evanston's unique, Howard Street's unique. There's nothing like it in this town. There's no major institution on it, lots of illegitimate businesses, a few pockets of amazing companies and businesses that have been there for years and years, who have survived and struggled, and this is for them, this is really for them. In the last year, year and a half, we've put together this Business Association, which is totally devoted to attending meetings and doing what they think needs being done, and it's for them also, and for the neighbors who live around there, who have struggled in a desert of, an entertainment desert, a dining desert, a drinking desert, well, you could go across the street, but, and it really, the, Howard Street is ready for reform, as one old politician said years ago. It is ready to have a bar, it is ready to have a theater again, it's, it's really ready to move on. And while I, I heard at least one comment that, you know, our taxes are high, this, this is the way you add to community property values, you add to the revenue stream of the city by adding to the tax base, and that's what we're doing here, we're adding to the tax base. I want to just say a few words about the legal department here. Michelle Mason Cup worked tirelessly on agreements for this and for the wine bar people. It's an amazing effort on her part, and I know she's paid to work here, but to see somebody put in that kind of time and that kind of commitment, I really appreciate it. Johanna Nyden and all the community development staff, Marty, and, but really, this could not have happened unless Wally Babkowitz had said, you know, hey, you know, this is economic development, and accepted my efforts and my encouragement, and, and that's why we're here today. I, I just feel like this is, I, I think this might be the most important night of my service.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding collective bargaining, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are ILCS 120/2A, C2, C11, and C21.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Alderman Wilson.